Megan, are you nearby?
Yep, I'm here, David.
I wanted to see, did you have a chance to read the thing I submitted and did it, were all of the issues relative to the to the union negotiations accurate? I went through, what I did was I went through minutes from last year and like marked down anything of significance. That's the way I wrote the thing.
Really smart. I skimmed it over. I haven't gone into detail yet, but I will definitely run it by Stephanie and Greg to confirm the union piece and then I'll let you know if we make any, yeah, if there's anything off. I won't make any changes without talking to you, but.
No, unless unless it's just one union that I mentioned that hadn't been completed because I think it was just, I thought we had the police, the fire, the clerical and the and the dispatch unions. I thought those were the four plus Greg's own. and the dispatch unions. I thought those were the four plus Greg's own contract. I think those are the ones that we completed in 2021.
Right.
But then Greg was mentioning something the other day about we have the police union or the, one of the unions coming up and I'm like, oh, is that on my list?
Yeah, I'll double check that. I'll, I'll have them look at it and we caught everyone. Definitely. Thank you. Yeah, I'm still, I'm still chasing down people, but once I kind of get them all, then I start trying to put them in order and reviewing them, but I'll make sure I do that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
How was the basketball game last weekend?
It was unbelievable.
Really?
Unbelievable. Yeah, it was one of the funnest nights I've had in a long, long time. But they were down by 13 points in the second half and they came back. They were trailing the entire game from the, from the jump, right from the beginning. And they fell behind by 13 in the second half and I'm all upset saying, you know, the one game that I get to come to.
Yeah, and they've had such a good season, right?
Yeah, and they came back and the place was so loud. It was unbelievable.
How fun.
So tonight they're playing Villanova and if.
My nephew goes there right now. So yeah, we've been texting.
Yeah, they, they showed photographs of first off Eaton Street at 10:30 this morning. Forget it. Kids outside, you know, you know, partying and everything else. Some of them, some of them probably aren't going to be making it to the game would be my guess. And then the, in front of the Dunkin' Donuts Center, they have a photograph at 5:30 of just, it's just packed. I mean, you can't get into the building and the gates didn't open until 6:30. The game's not till eight. So once they get inside, they're going to be drinking their, their 18, it was 13, 1350 for a beer, but they're like, there's that are like that high. So the kids will be in there. It's, it's gonna be crazy. It starts at eight.
Yikes. That's so fun.
Yeah, it was, it was.
What is your daughter thinking? Was she like, was she?
Well, she was and the the whole event, the day followed by, because they also had a, they also had a pep rally for, for the accepted students.
Did you go to mass? Did you have a mass?
No, there was no mass. That would have dropped it down a little bit for probably, but no, there was no mass, but there was a, there was the pep rally that they started at about four o'clock for, for a 6:30 game Saturday and that had the pep band and the cheerleaders and the mascots and then you know, just craziness. And then we walked right, it was, it was at the, it was at the civic center. It was in the, in the convention center, right next door. So we just walked across to the game. But the, but to answer your question, I think it, it moved Providence up on her list because it was just so electric. The whole camp, the whole campus was just alive. It was a beautiful day. So kids were out. Kids were out, you know, it was a normal college weekend day.
Yeah, yeah.
Plus it was packed with parents and kids and there was a lacrosse game and then so it was just craziness. There's no parking, so I had to Uber over. But it was.
So fun.
Yeah, it was, it was great. So actually we talked last night about, not this Saturday. We're getting tickets, I think, for a week from Saturday. They're playing Creighton. And but tonight's game is if they win, they're going to win the Big East. It's, it's the regular season for the Big East for the first time ever.
Yeah.
It is incredible. They're 21 and two and it's just, and they, they went, they've won six games by less than five points and they, everything is just falling into place and they did not play well on Saturday. It was awful. They were.
You're such a good like dad fan, like my, when I went there, my freshman year, Boston College in Providence were in the same league before they moved out. We're watching it on TV and my brother went to Boston College. And so my dad's watching it and he's like, ah, like we're winning, we're winning. And I'm like, Dad, you're currently paying my tuition, like come on. He's like Boston College through and through, because my brother was there, but um, you know, Providence is great too.
Well, we went, when we arrived on campus, right after I left the meeting and I Ubered over, we arrived on campus and there was, the kids had things going on. So my wife and I decided we were gonna walk around a bit. So we went into what, the Slaven Center and we were in there and there's a Dunkin' Donuts in there and everything else, but it's just, there's nothing to get. So we said, let's go to the bookstore, went to the bookstore and then we went to alumni cafeteria. And as we went in, I looked to my left and who's sitting there, but Coach Cooley.
Oh, wow.
So I said to my wife, hey, look, look who's here. So he got up and he started to walk out and I said, hey, Coach. And he came over and we took a selfie and we talked, we talked for about five minutes. And I told him, my daughter sees you on campus all the time, but she's afraid to say hello. And he says, you tell her that whenever, always say hello.
That's so cool.
So yeah, it was great. It was just.
That's awesome.
Yeah. And then he showed up at the pep rally an hour before the, before, you know, a nationally televised game. He shows up and he uses a flowery language to get the kids all riled up and it was really, it was really something. It was fun. It was a fun, fun day.
Glad to hear it. I'm gonna sign off for a second. I'll be back.
Yep. Goodness, the board hasn't, has a quorum, so at least I can begin to read the damn. I can begin to read the the script.
I'm on the loan or Chromebook, so it's a little bit different, but we'll see.
Looks the same.
Excellent. Good.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, seven o'clock. I'm going to begin the script. As a preliminary matter, this is David Gavin, Chair of the Maynard Board, Maynard Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Armin Deere-Percariot.
Here.
Justine St. John.
Here.
Chris Da Silva.
Here.
Jeff Swanberg.
Here.
Greg Johnson.
Here.
Megan Zamudo.
Here.
Chief Noble.
Here.
Chief Troyano. And Becky. And Justin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I've already done members when I call your name, staff, when I call your name, already done that. So good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted via Zoom. Everybody on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will, we will allow the public to provide comment via Zoom as well. The board would like to hear public comments and if there is further action that is required by the board, I'll add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, we may, if we're able, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on any matter. Please note that while this is remote and is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless it's otherwise required by law. The agenda was posted on the town's website and identifies how the public may join us via Zoom. Please note that we are being recorded and that everybody is participating by video conference. Therefore, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer, because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except for any executive session materials, we don't have executive session this evening, but everything's available on board docs and we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. Turn to the first item on the agenda before so, let me cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, we'll talk to each member of the board, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. If you are, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. And the public, we would ask for you to state your name and address. And if you wish to engage in colloquy with others, is do so through me taking share, taking care to identify yourself. So there is no public hearings this evening, so we can move right into the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is public comments. If anybody has any public comments, please feel free to raise your electronic hand or just say hello or however I see Jen Picarelli.
Hi, David. I just wanted to, hi, I wanted to, I was supposed to be on, the week before last, I meant to come on and share some good news about something that happened in town that you guys might have seen online. But so many times, you know, people put negative things out there that a lot of the people in town see. And it's just so nice to be able to share something nice, but the night of the blizzard, I was contacted by a Maynard resident who was having a very hard time. Her husband is very ill. She just had arm surgery. She was unable to get somebody secured for plowing and asked me if I could help. And I put out a call and was blown away by how many people sent me private messages and organized going over and though none of them had snow blowers or plows, they all went over and hand shoveled that whole entire blizzard all in shifts. And I just thought it was like the sweetest thing ever that all these people took time when they could have been doing their own yards and did that. It made me think of something and we can talk about it more offline, but I was wondering if there was some type of program. I know that like when we volunteer to do things, we get like a town pin. But I was wondering if we, if I was able to donate to people and have made maybe pins or magnets or something like that. If we could create a program for volunteers, then maybe we could recognize them and give them these, you know, nice acknowledgements that they did something sweet in town.
Great idea. Let's consider it. You know, like sort of like the stickers that football players put on their helmet when they do something good, you know. So, yeah, good idea. We can.
Something nice, you know?
Yep. We can certainly consider it. Thank you for the idea. And, and to hear the story, the nice story about people helping out. I guess it shouldn't surprise us in Maynard because that happens, that type of stuff probably happens a lot behind the scenes and we never see it. But to have it go out front is really good. So people know, know what, what's going on.
Right. And it was just so nice. So I wanted to make mention of, I meant to come on the week before last, but didn't get home in time. So I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Thank you for making, thank you for making it public, Jen. We appreciate that. Any other public comments? I don't see any, other than Jen Picarelli has another comment. I guess. So, okay, so seeing no, no others, let's move on. Item number two is the town administrator report. Greg, take it away. We have it in our, in our packet.
Yep. And. So good evening, board. Thank you, Mr. Chair and, and for the public listening, I am Greg Johnson, the town administrator. And the public can follow along if you do go to the town administrative report, which is posted the other week on the, on the town's website, go under government, I believe, and then town administration support. And it's also on board docs, which is what I'm referring to this evening. Just a couple of things to highlight, town hall, town offices are closed on Monday in observation of Washington's birthday, as we call it in the state. And then, and I also believe it kicks off school February break for Maynard Public Schools. A couple of things to highlight, a lot of information coming from Department of Public Health at the state level and then a Board of Health sort of in reaction to that specifically regarding to masks. So I encourage the public to follow what, what the Board of Health is already putting out there. I listed a lot of it in the town administrator's report. I'm, I'm not going to read it word for word, but, but as probably most people are, are familiar with. Where it's moving from sort of certain, a level of masking to advisories for maskings and whatnot. Although I believe public transportation and a couple of others, certain circumstances are still, are still I believe have the same mask requirements, but probably more to come from our Board of Health in regards to that. This last Saturday was the joint budget review meeting hosted primarily by the select board and the finance committee, but of course invites the school committee and, and capital planning committee and town staff and whatnot. That information is also online. So if you want to see the, the, the various presentations, go, go to the select boards page and then scroll down to get to fiscal year 2023 and then you can see all those. I will keep the board informed of any other updates, which there may be, there's always expected to be kind of a development as, as more, more information comes along and I'll have, I'll have recommendations for that as the time comes. Is there any questions regarding the budget presentations, anything since then from the board?
So David, at the end of that meeting, you had insinuated that you would be reaching out to the chairs from the budget and FinCom for a future meeting. Do you have any update on that or?
Just, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no, I, only that I reached out to Hillary and indicated to her that I think it's best that we wait until we have a little bit of new news before we rehash the same things we were talking about at that Saturday meeting. So that we can talk, rather than talking about you know, suppositions and without any real clarity, we can have some solid information and know some new information to deal with, with the entire group. That was the only discussion I've had since that day and that was today's Tuesday, so it must've been Sunday or yesterday, one of the two days. But that, I did not speak to the FinCom chair.
Okay. And so no indication on timing.
No timing, no timing set yet.
A number of the, the, the members of the three constituent boards got to speak, but a number did not really get to speak and give their opinions on thoughts on the budget overall for that group as a whole. So to know that there'll be a meeting, will it be before the town meeting or before?
Oh, God, yes. We're talking about before, before we go to a meeting, before we have a warrant article ready.
Before we have a warrant article, it'd be the court. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It was just not next week when all we'd be doing is having the same discussion about the same numbers that are, that are really not known to us. And that the board, this board hasn't even had any chance to sort of ruminate over either. So just more time.
And then when would you think is the best time for this board to ruminate over?
Well, we didn't put it on tonight's agenda, so I think we should have a discussion on. You have some budget issues at our next agenda, uh, next meeting, rather, on the agenda.
March 1st?
Yeah.
March 1st, yeah. Okay. All right, I will hold on my comments on the budget for the March 1st meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I actually had a question and it's more procedural, but I was curious because of all of the. You know, the information that kind of comes in last minute and the information that, you know, we're talking about things that might happen, estimates, et cetera. I realize that we hold this meeting on the, you know, before that date because it's by charter, but is there a reason as far as? Is there a reason for that in the charter? Or would it make sense to change the charter? To reflect, you know, maybe you have this meeting toward the middle of March or something like that.
When. Well, the historic reasoning behind it was just at the, it's supposed to be celebratory relative to the, the town administrator turning his, his or her budget over to. The board to begin its deliberations on the annual budget with the input from the FinCom as to where things are at. That's the historic reference behind it. I don't know if other towns have similar type of meetings or not. I assume they must, where there has to be some type of introduction of the budget, but. To your, to your question, the historic question, it was my understanding, it was before I, when I was on the FinCom. We had the annual meeting and it was part of the, uh, part of the charter. And the reason that I had understood was as a way to sort of grandly. Expose and open up the budget and have everybody that's going to be dealing with it present to discuss what was presented. And I must say that in the past, at that time, 20 years ago. The board really hadn't had much deliberation, nor had the FinCom relative to what was going to be in it. It was sort of here it is. And that was the first observation of the budget. Now we have a lot more transparency as it comes along. Where we, it's not really a surprise like it was back in the day.
Okay. I was just curious because I know like I said, you know, there's so many things that are kind of out there and possibly going to change that. You know, we have these back and forths about. You know, trying to figure out what, what it's going to look like. I feel like sometimes we're, we're discussing things that it basically are moot point because.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. And that's why people have to sort of not get ahead of this. The term they use these days is get, don't get ahead of your skis, you know, just wait and let things catch up to you rather than. Then allowing events to sort of take over and then suddenly it's not even what you were talking about.
Okay.
It's so for my two cents on it, the. The town charter review committee had asked for my input and I just, one thing that does come up is the timing of the budget cycle. As, as, as outlined in, in the charter. But it's a tricky game because if you, if you put any, if you go later in any of those dates, whether it be the town administrator's comprehensive budget message. Or the joint budget review and then, and then review the articles, et cetera, and then it goes on. So either then you have to consider, do you go later in the fiscal year for the town meeting, which is possible. But, but anyway, so I, I gave that, I gave that feedback, feed to the joint, you know, the town charter review committee. So it may be discussed at that.
The town meeting date is the one that would probably be more flexible relative to when we could move that back. So that we actually have, we don't have as much danger of having to change things at town meeting. But you run up against Memorial Day, you run up against school ending, you run up against all sorts of things that. Really just by necessity, we are pushed to mid-May.
Right. And you don't want to get too close to the end of fiscal year.
Exactly. Right.
That's very good. If there, um. Because it's still the town administration report, I'm not trying, I'm trying to push things along. Is there any other questions that the board may have about the tier report? A lot of good information in there. Thank you, police, in particular, Police Chief Mike Noble, in particular this time, and, and his staff for all that good information and of course. To Justin DiMarco for his input and all his good pictures from Justin. I appreciate that. And all right, well, that's it. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I, I do have one question for Chief Noble, and I was surprised to read the story, the story about the, or at least the tidbit. About the incident at the Gruber building. And apparently was, do you believe, and of course you can't get into criminal issues, but do you believe that there was an arson there on, on some, some, just some person?
I, it was an arson, but it was a, a person with mental challenge.
Okay. All right. No need to say anymore. I just, I didn't, I, you know, I thought maybe it was somebody squatting in there or something that lit a fire. But kind of odd. But I hadn't heard about that and thank God it didn't turn into anything major. Any other questions for Greg? I do want to say, Greg, although we might mention it during at the, at the end, but thank you to you and your entire team again. Some other people that aren't on here that may not have been witness to Saturday's meeting. That really went well. The presentation from you was excellent. The, the presentation from Alana was excellent. The presentation from the schools was great. Presentation from the capital planning team was excellent. So good job all around. Congratulations. And that gets us off to a good start.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Acceptance of minutes. We got two sets of minutes to approve, one being Saturday's meeting, I think.
Maybe not the one, it was the one, it was like the short one.
Yeah.
Or about the River Street.
Correct. Yeah. So two sets of minutes, one of which was very quick. Is there, are there motions?
We'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February 1st, 2022 as shown and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any comments or questions about the minutes? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Second set of minutes is for the, the quick meeting we had at 6:30 that day on February 4th on the grant.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February 4th, 2022 as shown and authorize use of digital signatures approved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions on it? Hearing none, I will take a roll call. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Item number four, correspondence. There are A through J in correspondence. Does anybody have any questions on the items listed? Or comments? Hearing none. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I do have one question about the Eversource updates from, from Mr. Murphy. I, I think that, so I think something had gone out to the residents as well regarding replacement schedule and things like that. And I'm just wondering if they're going to be notified or if there's a way to let them know if, you know, I know they're going to try to transition some of those inside meters to outside meters as part of that plan. And I was just curious if that was something like, should they follow Eversource directly or are they, is Eversource just going to be reaching out on some kind of timeline or how that was going to work?
I'll have to follow up. I'm not sure. Specifically about the meters and the.
Yeah. Yeah. Supposed to the replacements. Yeah. It looks like Justin might know.
Yeah. So this is really preliminary. So my office was contacted today by Eversource regarding some work. On Sherman and Park Street, some improvement work based off of those recent repairs. And I indicated our concerns with advanced notice. So Eversource typically does have a, a notice to proceed that they do to all their customers. But I requested that they take a more proactive approach than just a robotic letter. To ease some of the burden and the tensions that will come with some of the work that's potentially being proposed in that location. So I did make it a high level indication that I'd like to see them step up their game when it comes to proactively letting customers know specifically in that neighborhood what they're doing and when they're doing that. I'll follow up again just to see if that includes our authorities, really the public realm. But I will try to make sure it is well known that we are, we would like to see that happen even, even outside of the town support.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on correspondence? If not, I will take a motion.
Move to accept and approve correspondence A through J as shown.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Arm, oh, we take a roll call. Armand.
Oh, yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Item number five, we have consent agenda. We have three items, one, one item on the consent agenda, and it is a cemetery deed. So I will take a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, item A as shown, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Item number six, appointments, always exciting time. We have three this evening. First is with the police department and I will turn the, the floor over to the chief, the virtual floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to present Justice Agmin. As a full-time police officer in Maynard. Justice's resume was one of over 60 that were received. It was narrowed down to the interview and he was by far the clear choice after his interview. Some of the impressive things his interview was his outlook on his vision to be a future police officer. Justice emigrated here from Ghana when he was a teenager and moved to, you know, a small town type like Worcester. Which, you know, is similar to Maynard in the demographics and, and the like. So. That also makes it a good transferable skill that I'll have to be a police officer. The last approximately nine years, he's worked in a lock treatment facility where officers aren't on. So he's developed great de-escalation skills, which will carry over obviously as a main and police officer. His life's experiences, his unique perspective really will be an asset to the main and police department. He's a very motivated person, shown by, he is currently in the police academy. He put himself through the police academy. So he's going to the police academy, which this academy is at night. It's the first one I've heard of that ran only, only at night while he works a full-time job during the day. It was kind of funny during the interview when I asked him about OT. It's a, it's, it's a standard question that we ask him about OT. And it was almost apologetic that he was going to the full-time academy. He was working a full-time job. And that he couldn't do any overtime. And mind you, he also has five kids. So doing all of that, not working any OT, he was apologizing for that. Which I, I thought humorous because, you know, that alone is, is a very. Shows just as, like I said, his motivation and that, just, just putting yourself through the academy, it's motivation alone, but it's a fun graduate. He will get his associate degree and he, you know, he'll be a welcome addition to the department. Any questions?
Yeah, Chief, you said that he grew up in, and I should ask Justice this himself, but your, your comment said he grew up in Worcester, but I think your report to us said he grew up in Webster. Which is a lot different than Worcester and similar to Maynard.
He currently lives in Worcester, but when he first emigrated here, he moved to Webster.
Okay. So.
I'm correct on that, Justice. Correct. Oh, invite a name. You have to become a cop if you first.
Well, welcome, Justice. It's nice to meet you and hope that when you are approved, that we all have an opportunity to meet with you and, and get to know you a little bit. I thank you for your service and we look forward, I look forward to having you as a Maynard police officer.
It's, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. So I'm looking forward to. Hopefully seeing each and every one of you and personally having a little conversation and expressing my appreciation for the opportunity.
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
Uh, Justice, could you imagine if your last name was Law? That would have been really cool.
Sir, that would have been great. I already always have people cracking jokes about my name being Justice and wanting to be a police officer and it's, it's always a good conversation.
Yeah, it's so very fitting.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any others?
No, but welcome.
So one question for you, Chief, 60 applicants. And you had mentioned previously that a lot of the younger people don't want to be police officers anymore, but we're, we're getting a lot of applications.
Yes, we, we also opened up the application pool to a bigger thing by putting them on LinkedIn this time, by putting them on other social media avenues to try to get a bigger pool.
And how many, how many did you actually interview?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight, yes.
Great, Justice. It's good to see you rose to the top.
And thank you to Select Board Member DeSilva as always for assisting in that process.
Well, you're welcome. It was a pleasure to meet Justice. And listen to him answer all the fun questions. Get grilled.
Chief, are you going to be swearing in ceremony?
Yeah, I probably should have gone. He's still currently in the police academy. So he will come on board on the 28th, but he does not graduate the police academy until May 27th. So once he graduates the police academy at May 27th, then he will get sworn in.
Okay.
So will we see you around town until then?
No, no, not, not until May when he graduates the police academy.
All right. Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Sure. Move to appoint Justice Adrian to the Maynard Police Department for an indefinite term. With a start date of Monday, February 28th, 2022, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. Give it to Jeff. He was louder. So any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations, Justice.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Everyone, I appreciate the opportunity and I'm looking forward to learning and working closely with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Good luck, Justice.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. The next item is the, is a reappointment for Shanika Warren onto the Human Relations Committee. Chris, geez, you're, you're all over this. You, you participated in the interviews. You're the, you're the member from the board on the Human Relations Committee. So you have all the insight. Shanika, I saw you online. There you are.
I am here.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you for wanting to, to re-up and continue on with, with another term. So. Does the board have any questions?
I guess I'll just ask, how did you enjoy the year? Was it, what's the, one year or two years that you've been up so far?
I want to say one year. It, it, it flew by really, really fast. So I believe it was just a year.
How did you enjoy it?
It was interesting and I enjoyed it a lot and I learned a lot and. Would like to continue.
Great.
Any other questions from the board or comments? Hearing none, we can take a motion.
I'll move to reappoint Shanika Warren to the Human Relations Committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2023, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Motion's made. Motion's made and seconded. We, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Shanika, you need to uh get to the, the town clerk and uh get sworn in again.
Okay.
And thank you so much for volunteering. The third item on the appointments, I also see Kimberly on, so welcome, Kimberly. It's good to see you. Up, you're muted. Thank you for following those directions.
I'm going to embroider that on a pillow.
You're muted. Yeah, it's a, it's a.
Yeah.
We never, who would have ever thought that we'd be telling, saying that to people with regularity, you know, three years ago?
Yeah.
You're muted. But anyway, uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, you are interested in filling a position on the Human Relations Committee. Uh, so why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in uh, in joining the committee?
Uh, thank you, David. Um, my name's Kimberly Connors. I live on Deer Path and I've been a resident for three years. Um, I, in my real life, I am an archaeologist and I have done extensive work on Native American sites in our area. And these are sites that are not appreciated and um I'm hoping that being on the Human Relations Committee, I will be able to work to um further the understanding of the indigenous peoples that are from this area. Um, and but I really, what, what, what drove me to apply was the uh stickers downtown that showed up from hate groups. And that's when I decided that I needed to apply.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members?
Thank you for, for volunteering.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments, board? If not, we can take a motion.
I will move to appoint Kimberly Connors to the Human Relations Committee with a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none or hearing none, we'll take a roll call. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations. Make sure you see the town clerk and gets one in. And um, good luck. Thank you for volunteering and we'll continue to see you around town.
You will indeed. Thank you very much, board.
I'll buy one of those pillows when you make them, okay?
You know, I might make some money on that. Thank you very much. I appreciate the appointment and your time.
Thank you. All right, item number seven is the Affordable Housing Rent Schedule, which is really just a routine matter. Um, as you probably all know, uh, I think we all know, um, affordable housing requirements for units that are, that are donate or that are dedicated as affordable have to meet certain requirements based on regional uh numbers, et cetera. And because things change, the affordable units in uh, this is specifically for uh Maynard Point, forty-two Summer Street, correct? And so those numbers are, those um uh rents have been submitted and approved by the state and now we have to uh basically approve them as well. And that's it, the summary. Greg, you have anything to add to that?
You want to vote? No, but I'm looking at Megan. Do you, do you want to clarify? Is there anything else?
Nope, I mean covered it. I think the board had a similar agenda item for Halsted, um formerly The View, last week at the last meeting and it's um the same rates. So this is just, you know, another project that is part of our um, you know, local action unit.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, and the, the, the dollar amounts are, are on the papers that we've got and if anybody is interested, that's all available. And how they come up with the, the formula and everything else is all public information that we don't have any real say in. Um, but so, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-one proposed rent schedule for the Maynard Point Development, forty-two Summer Street, as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Item number eight is the Extension of Premises Program, which is a part of our whole issue with the COVID issues that we have. Um, it's sort of one of the good things. We talk a lot about um things that have come that have, we've learned from and things that we've, that we'll be able to take forward into the future. And I think uh the premises, the Extension of Premises Program is one that we will benefit from as a community. Some of our businesses will benefit as a community, uh, as a business community as well. So Megan, I'm gonna turn it over to you to give us a little bit of summary. I think there's, we have four, is it four or five different motions, four different motions that we have to make um to approve the ones that we have the applications for. Go ahead, Megan.
That's right. Thank you, David. Um, so this is um, you know, kind of the first test case of the board's new outdoor dining policy. It is new because it was, you know, approved in January twenty twenty-two, but it is an effort that came out of two years of our temporary outdoor dining program. So we have four restaurants here this evening that um are going, applied for the Extension of Premises Program. Um, and they, you know, it's a similar application to previous years. It's similar programs and use, use of outdoor space as previous years, but is a couple of different things this year. Um, and that is in April, the governor's emergency order for the local licensing authority, which is the Select Board, to approve the liquor license um extension has, is expiring. So this year, there are a few more hurdles and hoops to jump through for our business community. Um, you know, this, this approval, this, you know, potential approval this evening is fairly standard. But um then each applicant will have to go through the state process and they've been working with Becky Mosca to, you know, work with the ABCC to to extend their premises formally through the state licensure program. Um, so, you know, although they're here today, there will also be a public hearing in the near future to um, you know, allow for the public to come and comment on that, you know, permanent extension of premises, so that each year they'll come back and ask to use the space again. Um, and it'll be up to the board, but it'll already be captured as square footage in their liquor license. Um, so there are other restaurants that have reached out to me that do plan to continue to put tables out in the spring, but the reason we're doing this, these ones early is because of the alcohol component. So I've worked, we've worked closely um with the Pleasant Cafe, Azukar, Al Ho Piel and Gigi's and um everything is in order. Um, insurance information, license forms and um, so you know, and it's all been approved in or reviewed by the same town staff that has been reviewing it for the last few years, which includes public safety, of course, um, your Board of Health, et cetera.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions from the board? Don't see any. So we have four motions. We should make each motion as we go along and then uh one at a time. So whoever wants to take them, go with it.
I'll move to approve the application for twenty twenty-two Extension of Premises Outdoor Dining on Municipal Property and the License to Enter and Use Town-Owned Land submitted by the Pleasant Cafe, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following conditions. One, ABCC approval of alteration of premises.
Second. Oh, actually, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Thank you, Justine. So.
So amended.
So amended, thank you.
There's a second from Justine. Any further comments on that one or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand. Uh, you're muted. You get a pillow.
I just got a pillow. Okay, yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Next one.
I'll move to approve the application for a twenty twenty-two Extension of Premises Outdoor Dining on Municipal Property and the License to Enter and Use Town-owned Lands submitted by Azukar, which approval is subject to the compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the land submitted, plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to following conditions. ABCC approval of alteration of premises and issuance of a building permit for the Main Street enclosure, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
That goes to Armand because he was quickest.
I'm not as loud as Jeff, but that's okay.
It wasn't loud. I, he was quick. Uh, so is there any uh, any comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. We move on to the third one.
I move to approve the application for the twenty twenty-two Extension of Premises Outdoor Dining on Municipal Property and to, in license, in the License to Enter and Use Town-owned Land submitted by Al Ho Piel, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following conditions. One, ABCC approval of alteration of premises and two, submittal of license to enter and use town-owned land.
Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
That's amended.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Justine. You are not muted, but you are not talking either. So we've got enough, so we got enough to get through though. Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Sorry, Chris. Yes.
Yes, okay, and I am a yes as well. All right, and then the last one.
Yeah, I'll take a shot at that. I move to approve the application for twenty twenty-two Extension of Premises Outdoor Dining in Municipal Property and the License to Enter and Use Town-owned Land submitted by Gigi's, which of approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board policy, subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following conditions. One, ABCC approval of alterations of premises and authorizing use of digital signature approved.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that finishes that, but before we move on to the next item, on a related item relative to these uh restaurant and uh ext, outdoor extensions and everything else. Um, the governor's extension of outdoor dining, uh, the permission is set to end on April the first. And so the local municipal licensing authorities are required from, from an alcohol standpoint to get licenses all approved by, by or before April first or sometime thereafter. The requirements though uh are that, and Becky can speak to this better than I, but you have to publish, publicize in the paper for ten days prior to a meeting and then have a public hearing relative to the licensing. Given that we're going to, if we reach out to the Beacon, the first time that they can take submissions, my understanding is at this point is February twenty-fourth. They have, it has to go ten days and that would be after our March first meeting. If that happens, there is a risk that we would not have the approval from the ABCC back to us if we wait until our March fifteenth meeting. We may not have the ABCC approvals back to us by April one to allow businesses to actually open up with their licenses good to go for outdoor dining on April first. So we have a couple of things to decide. We could have a special meeting that is called sometime between, between our March first meeting and our um, March fifteenth meeting. After that ten-day limit has passed by, have a meeting, vote on this, get it through to the ABCC and hope that they get them approved by April first, which Greg, as, as Greg's discussion with me earlier today, he said every city in town that has this ongoing is now going to be pushing this, rushing this to the ABCC, so there likely will be a backup. And whether or not we'll get everything back to us by April first, who knows? But the earlier we do it, the better off we are. So the decision that I want to have the board make is, do we want to have a special meeting? And Greg had proposed an evening for it um based on the timing um of March the eighth. A quick meeting. We have, Greg and I already have another meeting that night, so it would probably be like six thirty that we would do this. And it would take no more than ten minutes presumably to approve the extension of these, at this point, four additional licenses, but God knows if we're gonna do, are we gonna plan on doing everyone who has outdoors or just the four at this point?
Just the four because it's.
Alcohol, I'm sorry.
Just, yeah, just the alcohol ones.
Just these, because that's why we're doing these tonight.
Yeah, these are the alcohol ones. Yeah. So if the board is okay with it, we can plan on and, but I only want to do it if the board wishes to do it. We can plan on meeting on March the eighth or we can put it off till the March fifteenth meeting.
Now let's get them through.
March two, it's fine.
And if everybody, if everybody has it available, just put it on your schedule for March the eighth. Greg, you'll get a post out uh at least so that everybody's aware and we'll meet on March the eighth, so we can get these approvals to the ABCC sooner rather than later, but we have to comply with the ten-day requirement on publicizing.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, everybody follow? All right. We'll move on to item number nine on the agenda, which is applications for the use of town property, and there are three of them. We have a, a parade and then we have uh some uses of Crow Park, so. Uh, let's go to those. So the first one we're gonna talk about is the parade uh for the Little League, which is scheduled currently for, there was a date on there, uh currently scheduled for Sunday, April twenty-fourth at twelve thirty. So is anybody, is anybody here from the uh, the Little League?
Yes, this is uh Ken Scully, uh president of uh the Little League. It was uh AVLL, now it's uh Maynard Stowe uh baseball softball. So you just switched it up a little bit, uh, but.
Not only that, you switched up your name online. You're, you're on there as Justin, so.
Oh, okay. That's strange. Well, congratulations to him. Uh, he's in great hands, by the way, uh with Officer Noble.
Yeah.
So.
So now your, your name shows up on, on my screen.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that's your, that's your son's name.
Oh, okay. Yeah, exactly.
As Justin. So, yeah, so anyway, um, so yeah, so you're gonna be having the parade. The, the, I assume the route is scheduled and still to be worked out, finalized with Chief Noble with the old route that you used to do.
That's correct. That's correct. We start uh over by the clock tower. We're gonna work our way down through, you know, downtown um Parker Street. And then, you know, pretty much end at Alumni Football Field. It's very similar to what we did in two thousand nineteen, very similar path. Uh, obviously, we'll need some assistance from uh, uh, the police and, you know, once again, I, I welcome uh selectmen, uh, police, fire department. Uh, this is, this is a, a parade that uh families and, and especially the kids look forward to. We haven't had one since two thousand nineteen, so this will be pretty big. So I appreciate it, by the way. And, and thank you, Becky, for putting these applications quickly on the uh agenda. I appreciate it.
Make sure all the um, the parents that show up wear helmets because I have been known to throw the ball for the opening.
You did okay. Justine, uh, Justine threw it out too, right? Two thousand.
Yeah, we've all had our chance, I think, so far. Jeff, Jeff may not have had a chance yet.
I haven't won either, but.
I haven't won either, but I throw curveballs.
Oh, I, I threw it over the fence one year. I threw it. So I, I threw it at Wally the Green Monster one year. So it's been fun and it's, it's a great day. It really is for, for opening day. So anyway, is there a motion?
I will move to approve the use of public ways in support of the Maynard Stowe Baseball Softball Annual Opening Day Parade, Sunday, April 24th, 2022, starting at 12:30 PM at the Mill and Main Lot on Main Street, proceeding to Alumni Field and with the rain date of Sunday, May 1st, 2022, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Good luck. Look forward to that day.
Okay, great.
All right. Next item, also an application for use of town property is Crow Park for Maynard Stowe Baseball Softball. 2022 season.
Yeah, I'll just stay on for a little bit. So I put this application last year together and so, so it's very similar. Once again, as far as usage, we'll, we'll have you know, two, maybe three teams. It all depends on how many folks sign up. We usually start April 2nd and we, we pretty much go all the way through mid-August, like August 14th. Becky gave me some blackout dates and times for other usage by Boys and Girls Club. So I have that on the application. We'll make sure to block those dates and times out on our schedule. It also should not, we shouldn't be interfering with middle school. I know they use that field as well, middle school baseball. So, because we actually have some kids that will be playing, I'm sure. So should be a good season.
Yeah, hopefully for all of us. Any, any questions or comments from the board? The only thing I, that I would ask is that we really make sure we definitely coordinate with all of the potential uses over there so that there's no conflict with anything at the school. I think you guys have done in the past, great job, those that have coordinated this league in doing that, but we want to make sure that there's no conflicts and problems for the, you know, for the schools especially.
Yes, absolutely. We'll work with the new athletic director, which we've done the past. And Mark Currier is of course.
Okay, excellent.
All right.
Is there a motion on this one?
Move to approve the use of public fields at Crow Park in support of the 2022 season as applied by Ken Scully, president of Maynard Stowe Baseball Softball with a schedule starting April 9th through August 14th, 2022, in accordance with the federal, state, local, public health and safety guidelines, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none will vote. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Good luck. Have a great season.
Okay. Thank you so much. Take care. Have a great night.
You too. All right. And the last one is also Crow Park for the Boys and Girls Club. Is there a motion there? Or is there anybody here from the Boys and Girls Club who wants to speak about what the plans are? I don't see anybody. But it looks like, it looks like.
It also involves, it's the same.
It's little, it looks like it's really young kids for T-ball soccer and it's, it's the same basic group.
It involves, yeah, I was gonna say Ken Scully as well.
Yeah. So.
Well, it looks like they're coordinating with Ken on this one. Yeah.
Yeah, looks that way. So is there a motion or is everyone comfortable with moving forward with this without having anybody from the Boys and Girls Club to discuss?
I feel like we've done this before. It's been a few years.
I think we have. I think we have two, which, you know, should, if we, if it is, it should, it should fall under consent if we've done it before and don't have a problem. But I don't know if things may change a little bit and be tweaked and everything else. So.
I'll move to approve the use of public fields in support of the 2022 season as applied by Nikki Tyler Richardson, member of the Acid Valley Boys and Girls Club for toddler T-ball and toddler soccer and coordinated with Ken Scully, Maynard Stowe Baseball Softball in accordance with all federal, state and local public health and safety guidelines and authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
It goes to Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. Next item is item number 10, Department of Public Works. An agreement for the DPW with our continuing consulting with VHB. Justin, do you want to quickly talk about, about this?
Yeah, good evening, Justin and Marco, DPW Director. Thank you, David. Yeah, it's that time of year again. It's our year yearly amendment renewal of our technical assistant contract with VHB for for engineering support. This contract is a yearly amendment based off of the change in salaries and rates for the support structure that is provided by VHB. What we're looking for tonight is the select board to just approve this amendment and move forward with our continued support from the engine services.
All right. Any questions from the board? Hearing none will vote. Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
Jeff, I was almost going to ask Justin to vote.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, great. Item number 11 is a discussion on several issues relative to ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act. And I'm going to turn this over to Greg to give us a little bit of insight into each of these topics.
So the, yep. So the American Rescue Plan Act is a federal program that is being allocated to the town level. We get ours through a couple of different channels. One through direct allocation and a second through county allocation. And so I've been informing the board about this since probably early summer. And at the time what we did is we, we requested the town departments to submit similar to like a capital capital requests that they would submit to me and then I would compile those requests in comparison to what the, the total the town is expected to receive from ARPA. This, this first item though is, is reflective of very recent news that we got from the final rule that came from the federal level, the final rule for the use of ARPA funds. And we, we have also have a, a service agreement with Melanson, Melanson?
Melanson.
Melanson, which is an accounting firm that is helping us, which ARPA money can be, is eligible to be used to pay for those fees as well. And that's the next item on the, on this agenda. But Melanson and same with our town auditors is recommending that the town categorizes the use of ARPA funds under revenue replacement, which, which at first we were not going to do because you know, it is a good amount of like many hours of work to be able to correctly and accurately identify just how much revenue replacement. Also, the town, frankly, we fared a lot better than a lot of our neighbors when it came to revenue loss over the course of COVID. Just coincidentally, we have a market basket open and outdoor extension programs and whatnot. We actually fared a lot better than we, than we thought we were going to going into the pandemic. Either way, the final rule allows municipalities to categorize up to $10 million of their ARPA allocation as just revenue replacement. And with, with, with not, with no further follow up. So you don't also have to provide extensive justification and research and analysis that shows, you know, how you came up with the number that you're proposing for revenue replacement. Again, that wasn't our original proposal, our proposal, which you'll see this evening matched what the original categorizations are, which is response to COVID, the impacts of COVID-19 infrastructure, which you can also, you can also do premium pay for, for town employees and whatnot. But, but we were primarily focusing on infrastructure and COVID-19 impacts. And you won't see any change to that effect this evening. But so I, I think it sounds good that the advantage of, of having the select board, if you will, if having the, the town categorize its ARPA money as revenue replacement is that just streamlines the, the application process. So instead of having to get to kind of not to be overwhelmed, but, but in, instead of going to great lengths to categorize it, otherwise you can just lump it all into revenue replacement. And whereas that might give other municipalities and it gives us more flexibility in how we use our ARPA money. Again, I'm not proposing any change to, to the plan or what I proposed back in June as to how to use ARPA money. Right. So I'm asking if the board would approve the categorization of ARPA funds as revenue replacement, which we can do up to $10 million. Which by the way, our, our, right now, our, our expected ARPA allocation is $3.1 million. So we're, we're not anywhere near the $10 million. But, um, right. That was the recommendation from Melanson.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we will vote to approve if there is a motion.
I'll move to approve the categorization of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds as revenue replacement based on the U.S. Treasury's final rule implementing the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, SLFARF, issued on January 6th, 2022.
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we will vote. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. Second topic is the project request reporting and administration. Greg, back to you.
Yeah. So this will pay for the contract that I have with Melanson. So it was recommended to, well, to not over, overtax as town staff. So, you know, we, we were able to rely on the professionalism of Chief Stowers when it came to the administration reporting of our cares funding. This, that was mostly that, that was a different beast in a way because it went through A and F and the state reporting pipeline. But this is, this is federal funding. And so the, there's, I guess there's different reporting requirements and different administration requirements. And so it was recommended that we get an accounting firm. So I, I followed procurement process, got a couple quotes and Melanson seemed to meet our needs. So and, and then the contract that town council provided and you can see the proposal that we got from Melanson. It's pretty straightforward. They're doing, Melanson is doing this for a number of other municipalities and they've been, so far they've been a good, good, good counsel to us. And again, this is paid by ARPA. So it's not additional like tax money.
Any questions from the board?
Is there a reason behind the strange dollar amount? Just $1 below 10,000? Uh, yes, town council recommended that. So it doesn't hit certain procurement threshold. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none will vote. But we have to make a motion.
Thank you.
Move to approve the following expenses to the ARPA project, ARPA Reporting Services, Melanson CPAs, $9,999, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Now the next topic is the ARPA project requests from the Office of Municipal Services. So should I turn this to Megan?
Yeah, the Director of OMS. Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. So I included a memo here where I outline the six expenses that I am requesting the use of ARPA funds for. Most are related to the COVID-19 pandemic and public health divisions, you know, requests related to COVID-19. And one is regarding technology upgrade. My office has also absorbed kind of Zoom management. And for that one in particular, town councils were suggesting that we increase our subscriptions so that we can allow 300 people on because some of our meetings have, you know, been well attended. And if you have over 100 right now, we have to cancel because it's a violation. So that's kind of that description there. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the, the items that I've listed or I can run through them, however you prefer, David.
I would say if everybody's had a chance to read the memo, that if you have questions from it, let me know. Otherwise, we can, we can just vote. The, the one thing I do, I would say, I was concerned about the Zoom upgrade. Hearing your explanation makes sense. And I also have seen that one of the proposals included in the governor's recent legislation may expand the availability of Zoom or at least remote meetings for town meeting. And if that is indeed the case, we would certainly need to make sure that we had more than 100 capable people. Cause I think if we went to a Zoom available town meeting, which may become, it's not clear if it will, but may become a reality even after COVID restrictions are lifted, we're going to need it.
Right now, just to add to that, right now, it's, if you're a representative town meeting, then you can do that remotely.
Yeah, but there was some, something that was, I just read it in the paper the other day that the, that the governor had written a new proposed law. It hasn't been debated yet.
Oh, great. Okay.
For, for town meeting, it will expand. I think it's included in the legislation that Kate was referencing on Saturday relative to the expansion of Zoom going forward anyway. But this, this expanded itself. This expanded itself to town meeting per the not just, you know, municipal meetings that we have right now, but regular open town meetings. And if that happens, God knows how many people would attend a Zoom type town meeting. You'd still have them in person, but it would be available on Zoom as well.
I did have a question about the COVID-19 test kits. Megan, I know we've got, we've had a couple, we've had, I know at least have one correspondence regarding that. So I was just curious if you could expand a little bit more on that.
Yes, absolutely. You know, this is a tough, it's a tough topic because we all want to make sure we have enough, we have, you know, test kits for people to be able to kind of take on personal responsibility whether they're traveling, visiting family, et cetera. And these test kits have become a really vital tool. So, you know, obviously the federal government has, has, you know, coordinated to send some test kits out to individuals. And we are also able to purchase them. So you know, we settled on this 500 500 kits number that, you know, the tests are fairly expensive. And what we're looking to do with this is to really fill in the gap where, oh, sorry, getting a little feedback. I just muted you for a second, Justine. I was getting feedback, but you can unmute yourself. But what I, what I was hoping, what we're hoping to do here, and this went by the Board of Health as well at their meeting last week, is to fill the gap between people really in crisis, people that can't, don't have access to transportation, can't get to their doctor's office, et cetera. The fire department had been kind of performing this emergency COVID-19 testing over the last year and they did about 150 COVID tests and that was for staff. But it was also for members of the public that, you know, would get in touch with our public health nurse and it'd be kind of a case by case basis. So, you know, we were trying to fill in that gap here and have them available at the discretion of really the public health nurse. Like if they hear of someone, they get in touch with our office and we need to help, we want to be able to help them. It's not, you know, we wouldn't be able to purchase enough tests for everyone to get, or every resident to get a certain amount of tests. So this is kind of our in-between strategy that we're hoping to, to do. And you know, hopefully we'll be able to help, help community members that are really in need and needed for, you know, various, you know, if there's someone in their household that tested positive or something like that. So that was the thinking behind it. And like I said, the, the Board of Health did review this. So, uh, that was the thinking behind it. And like I said, the, the Board of Health did review this last week and, um, supported it.
Okay.
So, so is that's, yeah.
Megan, is that something like the John is going to control the tests, how would it be distributed? Or is that you?
It's going to be, it's John, but it's really, it's our public health nurse, Kathy Castle.
Okay.
Um, who's, who's our really main point of contact with Emerson Hospital. And so it's, it's a collaboration. And, you know, they, they are the first ones that hear about a, an issue that, that needs, that needs support. So yeah, it would, it wouldn't be me.
Okay.
Hey, any other questions? If there aren't any, I will accept a motion.
Uh, move to approve the following expenses to the ARPA project, health agent, uh, payroll cost 88,476. Emerson Public Health Nursing Services, 96,000, COVID-19 test kits, 500 kits of them, 8,000. And 95 masks, uh, $500 and an authorizing, oh, Zoom upgrade. I forgot about that. 6,000. And COVID vaccine clinic, 1,000, authorizing use of digital signatures is approved.
There a second? Uh, Jeff got the second. Any further questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And then lastly is the ARPA project request for the DPW on water treatment. Justin, why don't you, uh?
I go ahead. Yep. So in front of you is the first inclination of, uh, a couple of projects that have been earmarked for our spending for infrastructure, strictly water, water treatment. And, um, fall in line with our four-phase water capacity treatment improvement plan. Um, this is actually the beginning stages of our phase two water capacity treatment, uh, plan. An increasing capacity plan for Old Marlboro Road Treatment Facility. This is, um, the infancy stages of well exploration, um, on our sites around Old Marlboro Treatment Plant. And, um, we have received results, though they are extremely preliminary and we still have to go through DEP permitting processes. But the results indicated that we may have found a well source that could produce 1 million gallons a day, the equivalent to White's Pond. So just know that right now that White's Pond is permitted for 1 million gallons a day. And we may have found a source on our own property that could produce 1 million gallons a day. Now, we will still go through the three to five year phase process of permitting and piloting. And DEP may adjust those rates based off of further analysis. But that is a new well source. So if you couple that with reactivation of our old well source, well three, which is a half a million gallons a day. And our current, uh, pumping capacity of well three A of point three, we're looking at a facility that could potentially produce 1.5 million gallons a day. Which is our peak demand plus from one of our sources.
Where is that located, Justin?
So this is Old Marlboro Road. And actually the new well source, there's a map indicated is actually part of the recent acquisition of property that we received as part of the Wisteria Lane subdivision. Um, and that area is, uh, surrounded by some of our property as well. There's multiple well sources there. So technically, if I really get into the weeds, Jeff might like this one. There's a couple of well sources there that may produce 1.5 million. But the reason I only, I don't want to get too excited is they're so close that they may cause interference. So our nice conservative effort, our conservative effort is 1 million gallons a day, which is very, it's a game changer for me. Um, and this is, uh, this is something that we may have not have been able to start without our ARPA funds. Um, we may have been, you know, focused on phase one, which is ongoing, which is our well for a treatment plant for project. And ARPA funds were allowing us to move forward in a more expedited manner on our four-phase water capacity improvement projects. Um, you will potentially see, um, a mo, a bulk of our ARPA funds go towards our well for a water treatment plan upgrades. Which our final designs should be any day. We're getting a little bit of, uh, a little bit of hurdles. We've got to get out of the way, you know, finalized, uh, plan. Aspects, some local permitting, but we'll get through that. And hopefully we're going out to bid, um, in the next couple of months. And then we'll realize the cost of the treatment plant above the two bonds that we, um, already have approval for. And ARPA will subsidize that remaining allocation. So whatever we're, whatever we're missing off of our bonds, ARPA will be that, that closed gap financially. And then we'll realize the real cost and then we can refocus the remaining ARPA funds towards, uh, moving forward with our phase two, uh, treatment processes, which can be many. There's many design standards. So there may be several engineering plans in regards to phase two old Marlboro Treatment Plant. Because it's not just a new well source, it's a new water treatment plant to reactivate our old well sources. Because we still have to treat the water, which is very hard to do in that location. Some of you live in that area. Justine, David sometimes gets in back that I know Becky does. Uh, Megan does. Oh man, most of you are in that area. So as you know, that area has very hard time with, uh, treatability prospects. So this is a, this is a kill two birds with one stone kind of project. So.
Justin, without getting too far, uh, into the weeds, as you said about Jeff, um, uh, did you have a, a, an inclination or did somebody have an inclination that that property might have, um, a capability? Or was it just luck?
No. So David, when I first started about three years ago was the finalization of the White's Pond Transmission Study Report. And when I was onboarding, one, I went to every master plan committee and really focused on the master plan. And number two, um, you know, part of my interview process with Greg was I am very familiar with Maynard's water problems as I grew up two towns over. This is, uh, this has been a cultural problem in this town for 30, 50 years. Um, so I did my research in advance and I am very familiar with this location. I was actually shocked that this area was never explored deeper. Um, I will tell you, we rely on consultants heavily, sometimes too much. So I took a step back and I looked at it with my internal staff and used our cultural knowledge to kind of refocus where our opportunities were. And Old Marlboro was one that was, uh, sadly kind of misplayed. But we focused heavily DPW wise on, one, we wanted to reactivate that treatment plant and our old well sources there. And then two, knowing that we had, um, we had area that hadn't been explored. And then we also knew that there is cutting estates over there. So there's a couple of parcel properties that we knew that may be something that we could explore, even though it wasn't public property. There's the ability to pay, to potentially secure that. So we started with, um, our property. Then we acquired Walter Erickson's Aspect of Conservation. So I explored that. And this is where we're at. But.
Right.
We're very excited. This was a focused effort mostly by internal staff. I can't take all the credit. I would tell you my catch. Water Superintendent Tim Malali, some of our senior, senior staff that's been working with Water and Sewer for a very long time. Um, we really focused hard internally on this one.
Excellent. Uh, any questions from the board?
So, I mean, that seems like fantastic news. Is there, are we waiting for some, you could just go in, are we waiting for some confirmation before we're celebrating on this? Or how, how, how happy should we be right now?
Yeah. Where you should be happy. Let me put it this way. We're happy. We can't control DEP. Um, at this point though, DEP is well aware of our capacity concerns. So do I believe we can get an expedited permitting process? Yes. What expedited permitting process looks like is three years as opposed to five. So just kind of keep that in mind. There is other dynamics and I think the board is well aware. One, our financial models, building on that five-year plan for making sure that our financial model is capable of providing what is that 25 to $30 million treatment plan upgrade, et cetera. ARPA will be able to provide the engineering support. So one, it starts with.
So, so Justin, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off because I'm, I'm less concerned right now about how we get there, but the water is there, correct?
Yes.
Water is there. Right. So that's, that's what I was making sure. So figuring out how to pay for it is one thing, but it's not. A second, a second exploration isn't going to show we are off and it's a decreased amount of water that's down there is really what I was concerned about with that question.
No, DEP could change our, so right now we pumped at, at maximum, we pump at different rates just to see what our raw water drawdown can be. The three-year permitting process will dive deeper. It will look at the basin. So the, the Concord River Basin includes more than just Maynard. And there's a lot of public service like Sudbury stepped into it. So then we have to look at that and they'll look at drawdowns and they need three years of data to kind of look at dry weather, wet weather, and kind of that fluctuation in the environment. They may permit it just because we can actually suck out of a straw a million gallons a day. They may say the impact is X. So we're going to permit you for Y, which that's why I say, don't get super excited.
But, but to Jeff, I think Jeff's point is the exciting point is that we believe that there is water there. And then if we can put political pressure on somebody because somebody says no, we can then turn around and put additional pressure on them to say, please say yes. And, you know, you can't, you can't twist arms, uh, when it comes to environment all the time, but there are, there are ways we can get around it on occasion. But, uh, it sounds like really good news and we can cross our fingers and hope. And the three-year project, even though it sounds like a long time, White's Pond would be a 10-year project. So, um, it's, it's huge. It's huge news. So thank you. So are we going to have a motion then? Or any other questions, obviously, first? Hearing none, then we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the following expenses to the ARPA project, Idris logic, uh, services related to the expansion of Old Marlboro water sources of $43,933. Authorizing use of digital signatures that approved.
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Justin, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank everybody who worked on that.
Yeah. Greg, before we move on one, uh, briefly, um, is there still opportunity? And when would that be? And maybe we have to put it on to the agenda to talk about our, you know, you would come up with a whole list of proposed ARPA fund, uh, you know, proposals or whatever. That we can sort of just have a conversation about if we're still comfortable that where all that's going and whether or not we want to reconsider. We can still have that conversation, right?
Ye- yes, we're, we're just now, in tonight's votes is the first time we're.
The first time, right. So we have, we have some opportunity and that can all be part of our discussion moving forward with, um.
Right. Right, right. So I'm going.
Concerns, going back to Saturday, some other concern. Yeah. Okay. That's fine.
I'm going off of the June 28th meeting that, that I proposed, you know, this is what I think we should do with ARPA.
Yep. Okay. All right. That's good to know because it can open up some doors potentially. All right. Uh, item number 12, our, is this one draft article I think that we have to approve, draft art, draft control E. And the chief, I think you might have some brief comment. We have spoken about this once before, I think.
That's right. Chief wasn't available and I wanted to make sure it was clear which of the two versions were proposed. And so what you'll see in board docs right now is, is town councils, there's a clean version in there too. So you'll see it from town council.
Yeah. Um, and so we've seen this and we had the discussion. Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Cause chief, just to clarify, this would just allow us to open up the door for 65 to 70-year-old, uh, retired police, basically to come back and do some, uh, um, some road work where they wave the correct, you know, detail work. And, uh, it just expands your opportunity to have more people working. Is that basically it?
Yeah. Yes. Uh, the, the law is kind of unclear because like if you're a full-time police officer, you have to retire at 65. Because that's the pension system. But when you're in the pension system, there's nothing that says you can't work past 65. So there's that kind of, um, unknown area where people have sued at times and people have like, uh, argued that you can, some argue you can't. So this kind of clarifies that. Uh, many other towns have done it. Uh, you know, we do it, you know, the retired, uh, it's a benefit, but it's also, you know, we don't have as many of the, it's, it's not the same where the, uh, newer officers coming on do this type of, of, of work as much as it used to be. So they'll be dying out. This will, uh, allow us also, um, as we go along, we will lose some of the special officer program for the reserve officers that were on that because of the police reform that's going to, that requires you to have full-time stat, uh, full-time police academy under their belt. Uh, so this, this will help with that too.
Yeah. And I know in the past, we've had some, you, you mentioned it, some controversy he, even here in town about people over this type of thing. Wanting, thinking that they did qualify versus it didn't qualify. And I know your predecessor had to deal with some of that. So this will.
That's exactly what this takes care of too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So is there a motion on this? Or first of all, any questions beyond me to, to the chief? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll move to accept and approve draft control E petition for a special act police details by 65 to 70-year-olds as shown and move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Armand?
Oh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a, oh, I am a yes too. All right. Uh, Chair report. I did get, since we last met, um, I did get from Becky, thank you, the, um, the documents that will allow us to start moving with Greg's PA performance review. Once I can get them all out. There was a question raised, um, as to what the board's thoughts might be on hearing, asking for input from department heads. Uh, just to us in writing from any department heads to com, comment on Greg. Um, and you know, any thoughts that they might have. Would the board want that? Cause if there were to be, it would come to all of us and it would be, they'd be public documents, et cetera. But would, uh, once the thing was released. But would that be something that the board would be interested in getting from each, or not, if they want to, they can, they don't have to. We just asked for input from department heads and wanted to see what the board's thoughts were.
So.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Justine.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm just concerned about, um, I mean, I, I think that it's a good idea, obviously to talk department heads. Um, but I'm a little concerned about, about stuff being put in writing that then becomes part of public record that, you know, can then, then be released. So, um, but I, I would really appreciate being able to, or having the understanding that we would talk to department heads to, um, kind of form our own, you know, opinions regarding.
Yeah. I was going to, I was going to mention the same thing, Justine. I think it's, it's, I think it's healthier if we have the conversations one-on-one with the department heads, if that's what we choose to do.
Anybody else?
What's the mechanism to this? Yeah. Good question. Should we, do we reach out on our own or how do we do that? Is that what you're saying? Yeah. Traditionally the route would have us go through the town administrator to talk to a department head or any, right. So and that's, that's part of our, like, I mean, first thing, non-controversial, but for an assessment of the town administrator, there's clearly, I don't think we have any kind of procedure established for that. So.
I would, I would think that if we agree that we have the, for, for the purposes of discussion of any input into the, uh, the review that you plan on, rather we plan on writing for the, for the town administrator, that we can hear amongst ourselves, give ourselves approval to say, okay, Greg, we're going to do this. And if Greg wants to tell us, no, you're not, he can, uh, but I don't think Greg would do that. Um, and we can just then make appointments with the understanding that that's the purpose of our conversation.
Is, is Greg smiling?
I don't think Greg, I don't think Greg would have much to worry about. That's my.
So what am I going to say? Like, of course not. This is a super weird conversation for me. So, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to say yes, talk to department heads. I mean, I, I, I don't like surprises, of course. Who would? So, um, I, but I always encourage you to talk to department heads and get, you know, get, get the subject matter expertise. It's weird that I am the subject matter, but otherwise you can, you can talk to department heads. Yeah.
And you don't have to. It's just.
Let me know what we, so I can pay them ahead of time.
For the record, that was just a joke.
That was just a joke.
Uh, we, yeah, whatever we come up with, maybe think about it, we should probably write something down. Just so there's clear expectations on what the rules are around this.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's, it's one of those situations where it probably helps. It's, it's one of those situations where it probably helps to think about a scenario for a future town administrator who, you know, is not Greg, who the board might have a more adversarial relationship with. Just while, while kind of crafting that policy.
That's true.
So you, are you volunteering to do that?
No, I will think about it and I think we should all think about it and see what we want to, what that would look like.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. That's fine. So, okay, more to come on that, but at least we got that topic out there. That is it for me for this evening. Board member comments, Justine?
Hi, thank you. I just had a couple of things real quick. First off, I want to thank. Megan and Becky and Justin and the additional town staff for working as hard as they did putting together the twenty twenty two extension premises for outdoor dining. I mean, we've consistently, and I've been proud of this, that we've, we've kind of been ahead of the curve ish. For a lot of this and we've worked very hard to do that and to support the downtown businesses. But I realized it doesn't happen in a vacuum and I realized that there's a lot of hard work that goes behind it. So I really appreciate that. And then the other part, while I'm saying those things, I want to say kudos to all of the DPW staff, especially over this last week. Between the storm. The ice storm last weekend. The freezing temperatures at night, the melting during day, and then the unexpected six inches of snow on Sunday.
That was, was a dusting. What are you talking about? It was just a dusting.
Exactly. We ask a lot of our staff, especially this time of year, and sometimes we feel like it needs to be instantaneous. Snow removal and ice is is a lot. And then you have, again, the warming temperatures where it goes up to sixty and down to twelve. Causes a number of potholes. You know, we only have so much staff and and I know they're working their butts off. So really, I want to say thank you to all of them for their hard work for this past week at least, especially.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Chris?
I just did. I know we appointed one person tonight for the. Human Relations Committee, but we still need a couple more. If anybody knows anybody that's interested, we're still looking for. Couple more people to be on that committee. And we're looking for someone that might want to be the chair of that committee too, because I don't think anybody that's there right now is interested.
When they can't, when they can't find a chair, the liaison becomes the chair, you know, so.
Yeah.
That guy brought silence to Chris.
Well, it's kind of funny, it's kind of funny because, because Caroline, who is, who is one of the members, Caroline Mahedi. She's very familiar with Robert's rules and every, and all this stuff that, you know, all the stuff that surrounds the running of the meeting, but. She just doesn't have the time or anything. So, you know, that's one of the, kind of one of the issues and Elliot, he doesn't, you know, he doesn't have time for it either. So or. Or the, maybe, maybe he doesn't have time. He doesn't have the stomach for it. I don't know which it is, but. We, we haven't been unable to convince anyone to. The chair. So if anybody knows anybody interested in, in, in signing up, that's. Committee that could use a couple more people.
You should have asked Kimberly while she was on earlier, I, if she was interested or told her you wouldn't vote for her unless she volunteered to be the chair.
Never thought of that ploy.
All right.
That's really about it.
All right, Jeff?
One item, Green Maynard approached me. They are considering a citizens petition for a climate. Emergency declaration. I. They were hoping to be placed on the agenda. So I wanted to submit that request just to explain what they're going for. I would love to have the sustainability committee take a look at it, but their first meeting will be next week at the earliest. So I don't know if they'll have time to fully vet it in the way that we would expect for a town meeting. Article, but I did want to pass along that request from Green Manor to be placed on the agenda to explain what their citizens petition is all about. And then the other update is we will be having a sustainability committee meeting. I think I have enough. Responses in, that'll be, I believe, next Thursday evening for the first one. But again, we want to. Get business down, choose a chair, set a regular meeting schedule, etc., etc. So I don't know how much time we'll have for deliberation on, on a new, you know, warrant article.
I would, I'm just curious, Jeff, is there a reason that, that the Green Maynard is feeling the necessity to do, to do this through a citizens petition as opposed to? Let the sustainability committee get their feet under them and and move forward the following year? I'm just curious.
For the fall town meeting, I, I plan to. Bring that up as the topic during the first sustainability committee.
Okay.
Yeah, what was, what was the article called? What was the first part of your comment?
The, a, a climate and emergency, a climate emergency declaration, if you want to. Act in past one, one or two town meetings ago, and then there's a second component, which was the hiring or halftime hiring of a sustainability director. And I believe they've reached out to the FinCon and something that adds to the budget. You can imagine what the FinCon response is, but I think they're on the agenda for the FinCon next. Monday or a week from this coming Monday, I should say.
Just. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
No, I just, I just didn't catch the, the full name that he, he said when he first started, but so thank you.
I was just curious, is that, and this might be something for council, but. Would. They, they can't require us through a citizens petition to hire a physician, can they?
I think if they word it right, they, I, they may be able to.
They can.
Yeah, and it's, and they'd have to. This will come up very often, fortunately, but I, I'm not sure if they would also have to propose.
Proper funding, the funding for it.
Yeah, which I think would be a good question either way, but the, I mean. I hope they come ask me how much, what I think I can help them, guide them through the process, but appropriation would be the trick, right? Because if, if we, it's got to come from somewhere.
So I, I suggested they soften, I've seen a few drafts, but the language down to something that would be, you know, suggest or consider or have the sustainability. You know, so to, to put the language as non binding or to remove it from that section if they want to still go ahead with the rest of it.
One thing for consideration, and this is not to say that it should be on this, it's just this town meeting or the special, whatever. The requirements for a citizens petition to get on one is different than to get on the other. So they, they just need to be aware of that. One requires, I think, a hundred signatures. The other requires ten signatures. So ten seems to be a lot easier than a hundred. Anything else, Jeff?
No, thank you.
Armand?
I also want to echo Justine's. Thank you to the DPW. I think they, they don't get a lot of recognition for all the hard work they put in, and I know it's not an easy task sometimes. And also thanking them for quick response to going and taking care of the potholes on Summer Street and, and. Park, Parker Street. They were pretty nasty and they did a, they did a nice job of covering them up. Avoiding some accidents. Also, from a personal standpoint, I think would be nice. If the public has any kind of complaints to direct them to the DPW director or the town administrator. Rather than, you know, thinking that it's best to post something on social media, thinking that that's going to get the results. I think it's best that if they forward it to the director and the town administrator, they will see that they'll get the quick response. And it'll be done a nicer way as opposed to posting something on, on social media, which starts, you know, piling up, which is not a good way to do that. That's just my perspective on it.
I think that's probably true about most issues that people have complaints about.
I agree. And I, I just think that, you know, look, everybody is doing their best they can in, in town, to Justine's point. They're, you know, shorthanded at times and depending on they're tired and they have to work through, you know, long hours through the nights to go through, to, to take care of the, the town services. And I think they deserve a little bit more of a, of a, of a, you know, approach, as you say, a nicer approach. The other thing that I want to mention on a, on a nice note, positive note, and this is just the preliminary stuff. I'm working together with the downtown Subcommittee for EDC on something that's going to be probably very exciting. I shared that with Greg this afternoon. It's going to be an art and a music festival at Nailor Court in Memorial Park. And we're gaining a lot of momentum. There's a lot of people joining us and coming on board to make this thing happen. So hopefully. I'll be able to announce something further down the road. So more details will follow. Stay tuned.
Excellent. All right.
That's all I have.
Anything else from anybody? Other than a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
All right.
Have a great night, everybody.
Seconded by Jeff. Everybody raise your hand. Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thanks. Great, great meeting.